And we're ready.
All right, thank you. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of Hamilton City Council for July 10th, 2024. A little after six o'clock, we're here in City Council Chambers at 345 High Street, of course, in Hamilton. We do have four public hearings. One involves border zoning appeals, hearing fire code violations. We've got a public hearing on the 2025 tax budget. We have two hearings involving community development block grants. Roll call, please.
Mohler.
Present.
Pullman.
Present.
Ryan.
Present.
Fear.
Present.
Vaughn.
Present.
Nab.
Present.
Lauer.
Present.
We have the quorum.
Okay, we're going to start off by offering a prayer by myself, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you are able. My dear God, thank you for allowing us to celebrate our country's independence, protect our first responders and military. We also pray for the comfort and peace to families who, close by and nationwide, who have lost family and friends to sense of gun violence.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We did have two special presentations, but Ann Coombs will have to reset the Home and Garden Award and bring to council someone who's taken very good care of their home and their exterior, so we'll do that at another council meeting. We also have a special presentation from Tony Harris and I think several others involving the successful event that occurred here in the city of Hamilton involving the professional firefighters at a statewide convention. And there was display, great partnership, people working collaboratively. It was so special and so indicative of what's going on in our city. I thought it was important that Tony Harris and others come on and speak about the impact on the city and what it was like, everybody working together for something that was really, really good. Good evening.
Good evening. You guys want to come on up? Bring them all up. Brian, Rudy, you guys want to come up?
I promise we'll be brief. You know, we're not going to like take a lot of time. I know you guys have a lot of business and things to take care of. So Tony Harris, President, Hamilton Professional Firefighters, IPFF Local 20. I'm fortunate to have here in the back VP Rudy Grant from Local 20, Secretary Treasurer Brian Rose from Local 20, Bill Quinn, he's retired Local 20, former president, currently or was recently the OEPFF Secretary Treasurer and is now the Director of the Department for the OEPFF 457. So Bill has a lot of titles. And then Sean Stidham, Travel Butler County, VP of Sales, correct? Okay, make sure I get my, get all my ranks right. So yeah, we hosted the conference in May. We'll have some pictures and stuff we'll roll through, but I wanted to throw it to Bill and then also throw it to Sean to kind of talk a little bit and then I'll kind of close, close with a few things. So, but it was a very successful conference, had quite a few people in town. Biennial State Firefighters Conference, so a bunch of union leaders from, from all over the state converged here and these are typically held historically for almost last 20 years held in only the three Cs really, the big, the big metro cities. So for Hamilton to be able to wrestle that away and get it here was a big, a big deal for us. So I'll bring Sean up and let him speak and then we'll throw out the bill and then I'll go through a few things for you.
Thanks. So I think that first and foremost, I kind of know a little bit what Tony's going to say and what Bill's going to say, but this all is really based on the pride and the passion that Tony and Brian and the entire Hamilton firefighters had for this community because they reached out to us about how can we get together? And also, let's not forget what the city of Hamilton did as well between Mallory, Jacob was here at that time as well, Aaron Hufford. It was just a complete collaboration of everybody working together. And then you start to look at everybody else from Lemon Grenade and the BCR TA and the Street Spark Project and Mayor Mohler helped with our promotional video as well to help lure this thing in, so he had a big part in it. But overall, the economic impact from this event was just around $400,000 for the week, which was a tremendous effort again from everyone involved. Don't want to forget Steve Caldwell and TV Hamilton for the work they did as well. And I'm going to forget somebody if I keep mentioning everything, but after seeing what's been happening the last 15 years, we've talked about a lot of revitalization of Hamilton. To be able to bring this event in was just, I think, a result of a lot of hard work from a lot of people in this room and around the area. So it was just a great honor to be a part of it and appreciate the opportunity. So without turnover to Mr. Quinn.
Well, I really didn't prepare anything, so I'm going to wing it. Yeah, like Tony said, I retired paramedic supervisor from Hamilton about eight years ago. I was the Secretary Treasurer for the State Firefighters Union and we've worked in a lot of different cities, Columbus and Cleveland and Toledo and Akron, and we've moved it around a lot of places that offer a lot of venues, both for business meetings and recreation and dining. So we were excited when the city came up and made their pitch and we were in, we were all in. And the, like you're going to hear, the collaborative efforts with everyone that we touched was really something that you don't get when you're planning something in Columbus, right? Because you're just the next flavor of the week. That was different coming here, coming home, really. Something that I haven't heard in other areas, Cleveland, for example, was where our last conference was, was people coming up talking about how cool the town was and that they were going to come back, they were going to bring their wife, right? They were going to spend the day. Their wife would love to go to the jungle gyms, right? And I probably had 12 to 15 guys come up to me to comment on the city and send pictures of sculptures or the sunset across the city that they saw that they, they shared that they thought was cool. So it was really, it was a welcome change, I know, to our membership to get out of a bigger, a bigger city to a hometown. And Hamilton greeted everybody with open arms. It was a great time, so thanks.
I'll say these two, both of them are being pretty modest. I mean, when we started, like, one of the first calls we made was to Sean and honestly it was because of Bill's urging, hey, you need to get with the city, you need to get with the Visitors Bureau. So some of the thank yous that Sean brought up, Mallory Greenham, Aaron Hufford, who's in here, Jacob Stone, who formerly worked here, Jacob and Mallory went to Columbus with us to make the pitch. Sean went to Columbus with us to make the pitch and like I said, that was Bill telling us, hey, get with the Visitors Bureau. If we were doing another conference or anybody's doing a conference here, those would be the first two calls I'd make, be Mallory and would be Sean. And because they have the blueprint now and it was incredibly successful and it was financially very good for, I think, for a lot of people, which was a good thing. But then Bill also, Bill said, you know, the different things he did, he was incredibly instrumental in this one, you know, being with his position and things like that, you know, and kind of advising and helping us, you know, with what would work. But also, for those who've been around for a long time, Bill host, helped host this conference in 2002. So it's, this was the third time it had been in Hamilton, the second time since 2002. So. Bill was instrumental. A young Bill Quinn was on YouTube talking about Hamilton. Yeah, yeah. So I don't even look young for this one, so at least you looked young back in 2002. But no, these two were incredibly instrumental. City was incredibly instrumental. It was a truly collaborative effort. And I know Sean took a lot of the thank yous and I'll kind of reiterate them, but I know when we went up to sell it, Mallory focused on like a slide deck full of all the revitalization. And Sean focused on, hey, here's the hotels, here's the amenities, here's what you think the costs are. The big thing I focused on was the pride in the city. You know, I'm not from here, but I feel like I am, I've been here 20 years. The thing that you see and the thing, the reason we punch above our weight as a city is because of the pride we take in this city and that's why we're going to places we're going now. And that resonated, and that resonates with firefighters anyway, really resonated with firefighters on this trip. So you can see, I'll roll through some of these slides. You can see that's opening ceremonies, had nearly 500 people there for opening ceremonies, 375 attendees and then guests and things. So it was a pretty packed house at Spooky Nook. Big banner you can see there in the background, you might see a little bit later clear, but that's our honor guard for the Hamilton Fire with our Piper, actually retired lieutenant and father of current chief, Tom Eichelberger. And this is, he played actually bagpipes at the conference in 2002. So it was neat to have him, have him here there for that. And that big banner, that was provided by Travel Butler County. They provided that big banner to us with a big, big logo and a welcome. So that's the entire Hamilton County Pipes and Drums, which is who retired Lieutenant Eichelberger plays pipes with. So he brought them up, they did a great job for us. This picture was neat and you'll see here in a second. This was from 1923, the first time we hosted the conference. OEPFF and Local 20 was a very new organization. I mean, we were just birthed in 1917, OEPFF, right around the same time. So this was one of the first conferences we had. I think they counted, there might have been like 32 delegates because there weren't that many locals that existed then. So they gathered on the courthouse steps and took this photo in 1923, just 11 years after we had our largest loss of life fire ever in the 1912 fire. We lost three of our, three of our brothers, a hunker loving Fritz gave their lives for the city right there in that courthouse. And these guys 11 years later are gathering and taking a photo. So that was, that was special. Fast forward, you know, some of our 375 attendees, couldn't get everybody there, but got a lot of them there lined up and filled up the steps. And the courthouse was incredibly kind to us to let us, you know, kind of take over the front of the courthouse for the, for the day or for the lunchtime hour. Bus, BCR TAs, we talked about, Street Spark, Fitton Center, Tommy Long with Lemon Grenade. I mean, this all came together because of that. We were fortunate to have this bus from Street Spark, Jen Acus Smith, Jen Eichelberger. And then to be able to throw it onto a bus was, was amazing. So we've seen it rolling around a little bit. It's pretty cool, pretty cool opportunity that we had that and we're able to unveil it at the hall that night during the event. Kids zoom back because we have so many people there, but that's a large group of the people that were hanging out that night at the hall prior to the concert. Picture the big banner that Sean and those guys did for us, that was a neat little keepsake. And actually, he kept the banner for us, so we got a gigantic banner that we got to figure out how to, how to display somewhere at some point. This salty dog, some of you guys may or may not know, they're just outside the city. Model, Model Ts, correct Sean? Model T cars and antique fire trucks. And so they deliver, they actually drove two fire trucks in through Spooky Nook, drove them in through the front doors and drove them down the hall and parked them there. So that was a, that was a neat little added touch. And one of them was from Dayton and the other one was from the Kettering area. There's the ad book, thankful to my Secretary Treasurer Rose, he's got some design skills for sure. He did that for us, designed it up and you guys have a copy of it, shows in there all the sponsors. We had a lot of businesses step up to help us. It costs, costs thousands of dollars to put on the special events and all these businesses stepped up along with, you know, our, our members stepped up and paid, paid the cost for a lot of these special events that we had going on. One thing that isn't on there, but I'll highlight something to point to what Bill brought up. I had gotten pictures at various times, about a week after this, I got a picture from President Ellett out of Malmi Local. He sent me to his, hey, just want to thank you for your hospitality, thought you'd love this picture, beautiful picture of our skyline. He's like, your city's great. And that's the echo, that's the message that I've had echoed to me countless times is just how much fun everybody had, I think everybody loved the Holden Town touch of it. And again, we couldn't have pulled it off, like going through, looking at the stuff, like I said, named off the city and Travel Butler County, TV Hamilton, Steve Caldwell. Yeah, every time I wanted a video, Steve did a video for me and trust me, he did multiple videos for me. He was probably tired of me texting him by the time it was all said and done. Hamilton High School helped us with the performing arts and actually made the gavel to give the president. So the carpentry and engineering departments both helped us and Principal Zary was incredibly helpful to us. Countless businesses, which you'll see in that ad book, Fort Hamilton Foundation was instrumental in helping us surrounding fire locals like Fairfield Fire Local and Fairfield Township's Local gave money and gave funds towards it to help cut the, cover the costs. But yeah, it's, you know, your Hamilton firefighters are just proud to be able to bring this here and be able to show it off and show off the city. We take a lot of pride in it. We were excited to show off to everybody and I think it really was a successful event. So if you have any questions or anything, feel free to, hope I wasn't too long.
I just want to say that everybody shines when there's partnerships. And I also got to quote Jim Goodman, one of these Jim Goodman-isms. It's collaboration over competition and that's something in the, in the industry of what's around here as far as the restaurants, pubs and the biz. It's, that's, that's collaboration over competition and then all the partnerships. And I, of course, got to thank the city folks like Aaron and Mallory and Jacob because they were excited about, about this opportunity, just like you folks were excited. So thank you for being such a great host. I mean, many of us, I think all of us attended multiple events, just so impressed by it.
Mayor.
Please.
I just would like to add to, everything you've said is absolutely true, but your speakers were so motivating. I loved hearing what they, I mean, I did kind of go more of as obligatory support for fire, but I got so much out of the speakers, so.
Yeah, four-star general being in Hamilton was a pretty cool.
Yeah, it really was.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tony and the entire team. Okay, we now go to audience of citizens and if there's a wish to speak, may speak during this part of the agenda or wait to hear the event, excuse me, or wait to hear, make their comments, excuse me, when that item is up for vote on the council floor. Everybody is required to sign this blue public speaking book. I've got about four or five people here who have signed. Everybody's allowed up to five minutes each to speak. Jim Lottman is first.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
Yeah, a question for you. Okay, how come it's, we, or it's packed up on Main Street again for a year, for the last year or so? And two years ago when they had reservice, you know, and when they'd open, it was crowded, but it was, it was smoothy. Why is that? When one ain't open?
Well, let's, let's hear the rest of your questions first, okay? Or comments.
Why, why it happen like that?
Any other comments then we'll.
Yes, okay. Also, on Third Street, right, going north on Third Street, you're, you're turning and I'm turning, I turn left, they did some fixing in potholes and they're, they're just worse than they were before they fixed them. Real bad back there. Why is that, you know?
Well, all I can say is, this is from my experience of driving around town, yes, there is a lot of work being done, but you know what? We're glad work is being done because by the time October, November rolls around, I think we're going to all be pretty glad that all that work got done in June, July and then August. But yes, there are detours and we're working our way through some of the issues that detours have caused, but you can still get somewhere pretty fast in this town. And, but thanks for bringing up what you're saying about the potholes. The, the, the fill does come out of it after it's been run over quite a few times, but that's why we're trying to use our milling machine and, and all to, to get to as many neighborhoods as we can, even the smaller neighborhood streets. So we are trying, I believe, I know we're being successful. Do I wish we could get this all done overnight when people aren't getting to work and coming home from work? Yes, but we're being realistic and I think we're doing a really, really good job with our professionals right now, Jim.
Also, one other thing about, I own precious places, you know, where says, I go, Bernie's Bar, Mike Bernie's Bar, and there are places that says, don't park it here in the corner, they parking for that sign.
Yeah.
And I call the police about it and they don't do nothing about it.
You've, you've made that comment in the past and I know that your, your words have been heard and we're just looking for a pattern, especially a pattern where somebody just every time puts their car in front of those signs. But I truly believe we are, we're enforcing. You're also helping us out by raising that issue and I think you're telling other people that, you know, please don't do that. I think it's going to help us, okay?
Well, thank you much, but get the police on them, complain about it, you know, get them on it.
Thank you, Jim, for being with us.
Thank you.
I believe Marilyn, who was here earlier, left because of something that was not on the agenda. Cole Wilburn? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Phil Wilburn, I reside here in Hamilton on Short Street.
Yes, sir.
Want to address the current ongoing paving operation here in the city of Hamilton, specifically Front Street and more specifically right, right there at Hamilton PD and the railroad tracks on Front Street. Okay, there is, when you get to those tracks, there's a huge transition. It's not a smooth transition. So, and, and I understand it was just recently paved, but all the equipment's gone. So by all appearances, the paving on that street is complete. However, with those tracks, the way it is, the transition, yeah, somebody's going to damage their vehicle for sure. I don't know if this is slated to be relooked at, I don't know if this is an issue that needs to be coordinated with the railroad. I'm not exactly sure, but I wanted to bring it to your attention because again, what we don't want to do is have a bunch of citizens calling in with damage to their vehicle and trying to get compensation from the city. I thank you for your time. I don't expect an answer right now.
Well, let's try and get maybe, if not an answer, you know, we'll get back to you or speak about it at a soon to come council meeting. It could be railroad related, I don't know. Can anybody comment on that out there or could Mr. Coe, Mr. Wilburn find out when we can maybe get some kind of a report? Thank you, Rich.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Rich Engel, Director of Project Implementation. The peeping on Front Street is not complete. They have just milled it and put the intermediate course down. Next, they're going to do the base repairs and after they do all the base repairs, make sure that the road is structurally sound, then we'll do the surface course. But we will take a look at that. If there's a major transition at the railroad tracks, we'll take a look at that and see if we can wedge it or put additional asphalt in there to make it more smooth.
I appreciate it. I'm sure a bunch of citizens appreciate it too. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilburn, and thank you, Rich. Sean McHugh, I've mispronounced your name, I apologize.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. So I'm.
I need your name and your address, please, if you would, sir.
Uh, yeah, Sean McHugh.
Okay.
1008 Franklin Street.
Thank you.
Okay, so I guess I just have a complaint. I, I don't know if there's anything that can be done about it, but the, the burning in this city just kind of makes the city stink. And I like to say, we're, we're no better than, than Coraine, the city always stinks. It, it doesn't seem right to me that like one, one person can light a fire and you can smell that fire, you know, a half a mile, a half a mile away sometimes, oftentimes a quarter of a mile, a good distance. And if you just get on Google Earth and you look at how many people live there, it could be hundreds of people, it could even be thousands of people if you, if you look at that, you know, circle. And I just don't think it's right that somebody can make the air smell like smoke for all of those people without them having any, any choice in the matter. And I would say, for example, you know, we got rid of smoking in restaurants, can't smoke in a restaurant anymore because other people don't like that. And, yeah, so, so I, I guess I have two solutions, you know, I don't know if they can, if they're really practical or not, but you know, the first solution would be if somebody calls to complain about it, you got to put that fire out. The, the person who's, who considers the fire to be a nuisance is the, is the determinant of whether or not the fire is a nuisance. You know, that would be one thing and, oh, shoot, I'm so nervous, I forgot my other idea, but that, that's all. I, I just, it just, okay, so, so I had a neighbor that was burning stuff and I really, I, I don't want to be this guy, but I guess I am. I was like, could you please put it out? He's like, no, I'm allowed to do this. Like, okay, well, that's your, that's what constrains you as a, as an adult, is what the government tells you that you're allowed to do. You're allowed to do this, even though, you know, oh, yeah, sorry. Even though I, I make the point that like, well, I'm sitting in my living room and, and it smells like smoke in my living room. I, like, why are you allowed to make, make it smell like smoke in my living room? I, it's like, you can't come into my house and smoke cigarettes, but you can light a fire outside of my house and then inside of my house it smells like smoke. And, and if I complain about it, it's usually, it's always aggression, it's always aggression, you know? And, you know, or close your window. Okay, even if, even if I were to just close my window, you know, the smoke's already in there and it's not going anywhere. And, yeah, so I lost my idea again.
But that's okay, then maybe you can just address what you just said. I, I know at various times of the year, I read it in, in the Journal News in this one section, which covers a lot of smaller stories. I read about open burning rules in the city of Hamilton as well as out in other areas in this, in this region. But I guess I'm not quite sure how to address this with Mr. City Manager or Mr. Chief Eichelberg, one of the two of you, but I can tell you exactly what the law is, but they may be able to tell you how to handle the situation until, once you want to, can he come on on there?
Would, I would suggest that Chief, Fire Chief or Safety Director just have a conversation with Mr. McHugh just to understand the particulars of this issue and see if we can help him out with that.
Thank you, sir. Hold on a second. I think you want to meet the Fire Chief and at least have him give you his business card or some way that you could communicate, okay?
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Is Bob Harris here? Good evening, Bob.
Here.
How about your address?
Bob Harris, 429 South Second Street, President of Southeast Civic Association. This evening, I want to share with council, there was a lady, I had approached the lady about the garbage on the ground and I also talked to her boyfriend and the lady actually cussed me out, but I did get Marcus to come out and take a look at that. And a week later, the lady's kids were outside and the lady was without utilities. And she had a newborn in the house, two daughters and a newborn. And so I, I called Brandon Solber, couldn't reach him, left him a message. Then I called Marcus, couldn't reach him. So then I called the city manager and the city manager took care of that situation. And those are the kind of people that, you know, I admire, you know, that reach out when, you know, it's nine o'clock at night to help somebody. And I do want to say this, about a week later or two weeks later, I, I saw the coroner's van there and, and so I, I talked to one of the officers and I found out that that baby had died. I just wanted you to know that you've got a city manager that will, hey, make things happen, even when he's at home enjoying his family. And I appreciate that, I respect that, and I, I wanted to share that. I'm going to move on. Jim Williams, myself and Lauer and I think it was Pastor Andrews and Wayne Jarrett, we all took a ride through the second ward, every street in the second ward. And we graded those streets from one to 10 in terms of the severity of need of being paved. Then we took a ride in the fourth ward and did the exact same thing. So I'm reading that they want people to call in and, you know, vote on what streets they feel need paving. And I feel like time is. I feel like time is something you can't get back. We did that, trying to make a difference and make sure that the worst streets get paved first. And I'd like to get some feedback on that from the engineering department. I did put a call in to Dan Arthur today, and he directed me to another gentleman. I left him a message. But I, I love Hamilton, and I will tell you why. Traveled all over the world, and if I speak to 10 people on the street, nine of them are going to speak back. The challenge of cleaning up our community is going to take a lot of sweat equity, a lot of talking to the people why we want a clean, safe, you know, city, and so that all communities can prosper. And the only way we can do that is having a safe environment for people to live, work, play, and grow, and be proud of their community. And so with that, I've always felt that, you know, cleanup was a necessity, to clean up the community. I'm not worried about those who don't come out, but to get it cleaned up. We now have spooky nukes, and we want our city to look good. We're headed into a direction where we want tourists to come in, we want things for them to do, and so we want all of our neighborhoods to look good and be good. And the only way to get that done is for all of us to work together. Together, we can make anything happen. So I'm talking about the streets, and I'm talking about the community, the beautification of it, and where we put our efforts and our money, I think, will make a difference. So I want to thank everybody that I have worked with and who has worked with me and Southeast to make a difference. So with that, I'll be back next council meeting with a different subject.
Well, thank you, Bob, for your leadership. I also want to mention that the compliments you gave our State Manager, we all believe that's right on, spot on, because it's accurate, your compliment. I look forward to seeing your paving index. You went 1 to 10. I'm curious to see that. Just kind of want to see how that matches our paving index. So, but, you know, thank you, Bob, for coming to council.
Pat, that is the city's paving index.
Okay, I thought maybe you did your own.
No, 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 no.
Good.
We did that with the city.
Did it sound like it matched, I mean, what the city had?
Well.
I'm just curious.
I didn't match what the city had because I was riding with the city.
You know, you were running with the city. So what they told you was the index, and I guess it matched your index.
Now, Pat, we can go back to yesteryears when we used to bike it.
Yes, we did.
So that was a plus, you know, then, and I think it's still a plus, because when you're walking or you're biking, you do see more than what you do when you're riding.
Very true.
With that, again, like I said, we want Hamilton to be amongst the best.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, that takes care of the audience of citizens. We now go to the consent agenda, which includes matters such as staff reports, caucus reports, meeting minutes, and two informational reports involving our May 2024 financial report and our May 2024 investment report. We're going to go into the committee of the whole, which is when city staff do make presentations on items that are on the caucus agenda, and council may ask questions at particular times to provide direction or get questions answered and the like. So I'll set the motion that the regular meeting be recessed, and the committee of the whole take place.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Fear. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none. That motion is carried. We now go into that caucus agenda. And Mr. City Clerk, do you want to have people come on up here and speak as you introduce him?
Absolutely. Our first two items will be presented by our Director of Neighborhoods and Planning, Mr. Brandon Sauber.
Good evening, Council. This first item here was presented to the Planning Commission. This is 1575 Dixie Highway. There was a proposed auto use that conditional use was denied. It was this pretty significant variance that they were seeking. We have a minimum of one acre for such a use for auto sales, and I believe they were at .48 acres. Any questions on this one?
No, I witnessed the fact that it was thoroughly discussed, the acreage and all the variances, and it was thoroughly enforced by our Planning Commission and those who put together the staff reports for that. It's, I think, was well heard, and the opportunity to be heard was also there as well.
I agree.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
One question. So am I understanding there was an auto sales there? They've been out of compliance? There has been a business there?
This was a new owner. So any out-of-compliance use would have been with a prior owner.
Okay, okay. But that location?
At 1575 Dixie Highway, I believe the address that this is listed under in the agenda was a partnering existing auto use. Maybe that's led to some of the confusion.
Okay, that could be, okay.
But an existing operator is the 3111 address that is on there.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Subject property is 1575, though.
Yep, got it.
All right. Next item relates to some right-of-way vacation on St. Anne's campus in the Lindenwald neighborhood. As you can see, there were some historic, historically-platted right-of-way alleys that I'm not sure ever existed, and if they did, it would have been 1920s, I would assume. This really helps them to clean up some of the parcel issues on their campus as they contemplate their campus master plan, which includes the former convent that exists just across the alley, and I guess that would be the southeast corner. That property is in poor condition, and they are planning to demolish that. But part of the reason for vacating some of this right-of-way is to replace the storage that they had in the convent as part of their ongoing kind of campus master plan. You may suspect that the alley that runs between the parking lot and the convent would have been a part of this vacation, as I did. Turns out, that alley was vacated in 1965. So I believe they plan to combine some of these parcels as a result of this vacation down the road. Any questions on this?
Thank you.
Welcome.
Next up for Agenda Item Number Three will be a presentation by our Law Director, Ms. Letitia Block.
Good evening, Mayor Mueller, members of City Council, and citizens of Hamilton. Before you to present information related to the dissolving of a JED agreement with Ross Township, the township has requested that we dissolve this agreement. We entered into this in 2021. It established the Ross-Hamilton Joint Economic Development District 1. There is no property owned by the JED, no obligations within it. We have an obligation under the agreement to enter into legislation in order to dissolve it within 90 days of Ross Township's resolution to dissolve. So Ross Township in your packet, they have already passed a resolution to dissolve the JED, and we would need to do that 90 days, the legislative authority within 90 days of their resolution, in order to go ahead and terminate that. So that is what is being proposed, that we do that at the next council meeting. So you will see that in the next packet. Are there any questions about that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And last, on the caucus agenda, will be a presentation by our City Manager, Mr. Craig Boukai.
Mayor, Council, the request here is to amend the pay range. It's related to a Department of Infrastructure reorganization. Request is to revise the pay range down to more accurately reflect the current duties associated with that position.
Questions, comments? All right, I want to note that we went into Committee of the Whole at 6:35. I'll set the motion that the Committee of the Whole be closed.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nab, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none. That motion is carried at 6:42. I'll set the motion that the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Fear, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mueller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted. Seven zero.
Regular meeting is reconvened at 6:43, and then I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Motion, now with the exception of the items so noted, Council received the reports of the consent agenda and concur on the recommendations.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none. That motion is carried at 6:43. And I'll accept the motion that the regular meeting be recessed, and the public hearing takes place.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nab, seconded by Vice Mayor Pullman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none, that public hearings will now take place, and it is 6:44. I want to read the public hearing number one.
A public hearing regarding amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Hamilton, Ohio by amending Section 4100 Board of Zoning Appeals to allow appeals of the Fire Prevention Code, City of Hamilton applicant.
Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing, which is number five on the agenda? This public hearing involving the Board of Zoning Appeals allowing to hear appeals of the Fire Prevention Code. Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing, as stated by the City Clerk? Anyone on council wish to be heard or wish to make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Lauer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none. That motion is carried at 6:45. We're now going to Agenda Item Number Six, which is the second public hearing involving our tax budget.
A public hearing regarding the 2025 tax budget.
Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving the 2025 tax budget? Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving the 2025 tax budget? Anyone on council wish to be heard, wish to make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Nab, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none. That public hearing is closed at 6:45. I want to say for the record that public hearing number five had nobody sign the book, and public hearing number six on the agenda, nobody signs the book. We now go to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is our third public hearing for this evening.
A public hearing regarding approving the city of Hamilton's substantial amendment, annual action plan update for fiscal year 2022 through 2023, delineating the statement of objectives and proposed use of Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and authorizing the submittal of said plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. The city of Hamilton approves the accepting, amending, and budgeting and appropriation up to $51,037 for housing activities.
Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving the Community Development Block Grant monies for fiscal year plan 2022, 2023, and that includes monies for housing activities? Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving these CDBG funds? Anyone on council wish to make a motion, wish to be heard at this public hearing? Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the public hearing be closed. Second.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none. That motion is carried at 6:47. And for the record, no one signed the public speaking book for that particular public hearing, Agenda Item Number Seven. We now go to Agenda Item Number Eight, which is another public hearing. Mr. City Clerk, if you will read that.
A public hearing regarding an ordinance approving the city of Hamilton substantial amendment, annual action plan update for multiple fiscal years, delineating the statement of objectives and proposed use of Community Development Block Grant funds, and authorizing the submittal of said plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD.
Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving the multiple fiscal years in our action plan, involving proposed use of CDBG program funds? Anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this public hearing involving proposed use of Community Development Block Grant funds? Anyone on council wish to be heard or wish to make a motion at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none. That motion is carried at 6:48. And if I didn't say it, the last hearing number seven was closed at 6:47. And for the record, nobody signed the public speaking book for that Agenda Item Number Eight. All right, I'll accept the motion that the regular meeting be reconvened.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Vice Mayor Pullman. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mueller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted. Seven zero.
Thank you, and it's 6:48. And I'll go into Council actions pertaining to legislative items. I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I move that a note be made upon the minutes that each member of council was furnished a printed copy of each item of legislation prior to its being considered at this meeting.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Vaughn, seconded by Councilmember Nab. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none. That motion is carried at 6:49. Okay, we now go to pending legislation, Agenda Item Number Nine, second reading of an ordinance involving a planned development with variances Gorham Drive and Baccarat Drive.
An ordinance approving a preliminary and final P D plan development proposal for 310 Gorham Drive, 1580 Baccarat Drive, to allow two detached single-family structures on vacant properties owned, R P D residential plan development with three variances to the Hamilton zoning ordinance, HZO, Josh Agricola, Justin Doyle Homes, applicant, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nab.
Remove the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nab, seconded by Vice Mayor Pullman. Any discussion or comments on this Agenda Item Number Nine? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mueller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Ordance adopted. Seven zero.
Thank you. We now go to new legislation, Agenda Item Number Ten, two readings of an emergency ordinance involving conveyance of property at our University Commerce Park involving logistics.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the City Manager to execute a sale and development agreement, property conveyance, and related actions related to certain real property located at the University Commerce Park, City of Hamilton Cellar Logistics Property Group, LLC purchaser, first of two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title. Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mueller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted. Seven zero.
Second reading of the emergency ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the City Manager to execute a sale and development agreement, property conveyance, and related actions related to certain real property located at University Commerce Park, Save Hamilton Cellar Logistics Property Group, LLC purchaser, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted. Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Ryan. Discussion, comments, questions on this one? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mueller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Ordance adopted. Seven zero.
Okay, we now go to Agenda Item Number Eleven, two reads of an ordinance involving supplemental appropriations.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Hamilton during fiscal year ending December 31, 2024, first of two readings.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title. Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Nab. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mueller.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted. Seven zero.
Second reading of the ordinance, please.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Hamilton during fiscal year ending December 31, 2024, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted. Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by Councilmember Nab. Any questions? Any questions or discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, seven to zero.
And we now go to first reading of an ordinance involving our codified ordinances, the Fire Prevention Code involving appeals, vote violations.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by amending and supplementing Chapter 1505 Fire Prevention Code to allow for civil citations and to designate the Board of Zoning Appeals to serve as the Appeals Board for Fire Prevention Code Civil Citations, first reading.
Thank you, we go to agenda item number 13, involving the zoning ordinance in the section involving Board of Zoning Appeals regarding the Board of Zoning Appeals hearing appeals on the Fire Code violations.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Hamilton, Ohio by amending Section 4100 Board of Zoning Appeals to allow the Board to take appeals by any person aggrieved by an officer, department, board, or bureau of the City of Hamilton affected by a decision of the Fire Chief or their designee under the Fire Prevention Code, City of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
Thank you, agenda item number 14, first reading of an ordinance involving a right-of-way dedication plot, Cleveland Avenue.
An ordinance approving a right-of-way dedication plot of parts of City Lots 24398, 24408, 22571, and 24519 as public right-of-way on Cleveland Avenue, City of Hamilton applicant, first reading.
Thank you, we go to agenda item number 15, two readings of an emergency ordinance involving a job classification.
An emergency ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the City's Classification Compensation Plan as set forth in Emergency Ordinance Number EOR 2023-12-106, adopted December 13th, sorry, it should be, it should be 2024. Adopted December 13th, 2023, as amended from time to time to establish the new classification of the victim's advocate.
Okay, did you read it 2024 or did you mean 2023?
Should be Madam Law Director, it should be 2024. Can I edit that item, please?
Yes.
Okay, you're going to say 23 or you're going to say 24?
24, that was the last amendment of our Schedule A.
So we...
I'm going to update the title for council.
That date hasn't arrived yet.
Yeah, that date hasn't arrived.
Oh, that's...
You were right the first time.
Yeah, you were right the first time.
I was thinking, yeah, it's not, it was a...
Meeting was going so well, I had to do something.
It's okay, we got your back.
Time worked.
Okay, we're just, were you talking about the ordinance date?
Title, yes, the date.
Let's just read it again.
Okay.
23.
An emergency ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the City's Classification Compensation Plan as set forth in Emergency Ordinance Number EOR 2023-12-106, adopted December 13th, 2023, as amended from time to time to establish the new classification of the victim's advocate.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second. Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by council member Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven to zero.
Take a reading of the emergency ordinance, please.
An emergency ordinance amending and supplementing Schedule A of the City's Classification Compensation Plan as set forth in Emergency Ordinance Number EOR 2023-12-106, adopted December 13th, 2023, as amended from time to time to establish the new classification of the victim's advocate, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the ordinance be adopted.
Second. Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by council member Ryan. Discussion or comments about this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, seven to zero.
Thank you, we go to agenda item number 16, which is two readings of, two readings of an ordinance involving community development block grant funds.
An ordinance approving the City of Hamilton substantial amendment, annual action plan update for multiple fiscal years delineating the statement of objectives and proposed use of community development block grant funds and authorizing the submittal of said plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. The City of Hamilton applicant to amend, transfer, budget, and appropriate fiscal year 2017 through 2018, fiscal year 2018 through 2019, fiscal year 2019 through 2020, fiscal year 2020 through 2021, fiscal year 2021 through 2022, fiscal year 2022 through 2023, and fiscal year 2023 through 2024, CDBG budgets up to $423,626.60 for public facility improvements and housing fiscal year 2019 through 2020, CDBG CV budget up to $6,302.19 and home funds for fiscal year 2017 through 2018, fiscal year 2018 through 2019, fiscal year 2018 through 2020, fiscal year 2020 through 2021, fiscal year 2021 through 2022, and fiscal year 2022 through 2023 up to $111,092.21 for housing activities, first reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Vaughn.
I move the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second.
Motion by council member Vaughn, seconded by council member Fear, that's what I had, that's just CDBG block grants as well as the home funds. So there's been a first and a second, roll call vote, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven to zero.
Okay, second reading of the ordinance, please.
An ordinance approving the City of Hamilton substantial amendment, annual action plan update for multiple fiscal years delineating the statement of objectives and proposed use of community development block grant funds and authorizing the submittal of said plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD. The City of Hamilton applicant to amend, transfer, budget, and appropriate fiscal year 2017 through 2018, fiscal year 2018 through 2019, fiscal year 2019 through 2020, fiscal year 2020 through 2021, fiscal year 2021 through 2022, fiscal year 2022 through 2023, and fiscal year 2023 through 2024, CDBG budgets up to $423,626.60 for public facility improvements and housing fiscal year 2019 through 2020, CDBG CV budget up to $6,302.19 and home funds for fiscal year 2017 through 2018, fiscal year 2018 through 2019, fiscal year 2018 through 2020, fiscal year 2020 through 2021, fiscal year 2021 through 2022, and fiscal year 2022 through 2023 up to $111,092.21 for housing activities, second reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Vaughn.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Motion by council member Vaughn, seconded by council member Fear, any discussion or comments on this one? Okay, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, seven to zero.
Okay, we now go to agenda item number seventeen, which is also two readings of an ordinance involving community development block grant funds.
An ordinance approving the City of Hamilton substantial amendment, annual action plan update for fiscal year 2022 through 2023 delineating the statement of objectives and proposed use of community development block grant funds and authorizing the submittal of said plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and the City of Hamilton authorizing, accepting, and amending, budgeting, and appropriation of up to $51,937 for housing activities, City of Hamilton applicant, first of two readings.
Mayor.
Council member Nab.
I move the rules be suspended and said ordinance be read a second time by its title.
Second. Motion by council member Nab, seconded by council member Ryan. Roll call vote on that motion, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven to zero.
Second reading of that ordinance, please.
An ordinance approving the City of Hamilton substantial amendment, annual action plan update for fiscal year 2022 through 2023 delineating the statement of objectives and proposed use of community development block grant CDBG funds and authorizing the submittal of said plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and the City of Hamilton authorizing the accepting, amending, budgeting, and appropriation of up to $51,937 for housing activities, City of Hamilton applicant, second reading.
Mayor.
Council member Nab.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second. By council member Nab, seconded by council member Ryan. Comments, discussion, questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Orance adopted, seven to zero.
Okay, we now go to agenda item number eighteen, first reading of an ordinance involving license fees for food establishments, food operations.
An ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 1733 fees and charges of the codified ordinances of the City of Hamilton, Ohio relative to license fees for certain food establishments and food service operations, addition of the person in charge, Level 1 food safety training fee, and burial fee, first reading.
Thank you, we go to agenda item number nineteen, resolution involving OKI funding for the London Road, South Washington Boulevard, Elmwood Intersection Improvement Project.
A resolution authorizing, directing, ratifying, and supporting the filing of a grant application to the Ohio Kentucky Indiana Regional Council of Governments, OKI, Ohio Service Transportation Block Grant, STBG, funding program for the new London Road, South Washington Boulevard, Elmwood Road Intersection Improvement Project, and authorizing and directing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to accept and receive said grant funds.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by council member Fear. Discussion. Hearing none, hope we get this right awarded to us. Roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven to zero.
Go to agenda item number twenty, resolution involving permanent utility easement, Logan Avenue.
A resolution declaring the intent of the City of Hamilton to appropriate a permanent utility easement in certain real estate located at 1931 Logan Avenue, Hamilton, Ohio, M. and L. Storage Facilities LLC property owner.
Thank you, please note for the record that council member Lauer has to abstain from this, and he has left the council chambers prior to any kind of discussion on this matter.
Mayor.
Council member Nab.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion by council member Nab, seconded by council member Ryan. Any discussion or comments on this particular resolution? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
And council member Lauer is not present, so that resolution is adopted, six to zero.
Please let Mr. Lauer back in. Agenda item number twenty-one, resolution involving Tandem Ventures LLC, South Third Street.
A resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a community reinvestment area agreement with Tandem Ventures LLC related to a project at 20 and 26 South Third Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Pullman.
Make a motion that the resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion by Vice Mayor Pullman, seconded by council member Ryan. Comments, questions on this one? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven to zero.
We now go to agenda item number twenty-two, it's a resolution involving a side lot, 622 South 11th Street.
A resolution approving the lease of certain real property located within the City of Hamilton, Ohio's urban renewal area to an adjoining property owner as a side lot, 622 South 11th Street.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion by council member Vaughn, seconded by council member Lauer. Discussion on this? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven to zero.
Now go to agenda item number twenty-three, a resolution also involving a side lot program, 1205 Parkmo Avenue.
A resolution approving the conveyance of certain real property acquired through the land bank to an adjoining property owner as a side lot, 1205 Parkmo Avenue.
Mr. Mayor.
Council member Vaughn.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Motion by council member Vaughn, seconded by Vice Mayor Pullman. Discussion or comments on this one? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mohler.
Yes.
Pullman.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Fear.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Nab.
Yes.
Lauer.
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven to zero.
Okay, we go to agenda item number twenty-four, a resolution involving the tax budget for fiscal year 2025.
A resolution adopting the tax budget of the City of Hamilton, Ohio for fiscal year 2025.
Mayor.
Council member Nab.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second. Motion by council member Nab, seconded by council member Ryan. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please, sir.
Mohler.
Yes.